Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me? Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you for being here, for trying to make a difference in your community and such an important issue that does not get enough attention. My name is Jen Rumbles and I am the county council member for District 5 of Puna and I have put together this meeting with Hawaii Ant Lab, Big Island Invasive Species Council, Little Fire Ant Hui, all of which I appreciate. I also want to, before I start, I want to thank my aide Blake Watson for putting this together. This point really would have happened if I hadn't. Carolyn Dillon, Heather Forrester, and Franny Brewer, thank you for being here. As we know and probably why you're here, little fire ants have impacted almost every aspect of life in Puna. I just recently did an interview with KITV where I got to talk about the impacts and I made a post on Facebook and about sixty people responded with how fire ants have impacted them. And it's impacted every aspect of our existence, especially when it comes to farming, harvesting, to being able to apply composting materials, and even letting your kids outside the claim. Some people are saying that they're not allowing their kids outside the claim. That is a very sad situation. So, thank you for being here and preventing it from spreading. If you do have it and if you don't have it, for being preventative about it. I just wanted to give a couple of updates as it relates to fire ants. First, the county composting facility. How many of you have heard about our composting facility? Okay, great. It was suspected a few years ago to have been spreading fire ants. And so now we have a new composting contract. So, we were doing mulch before, where you could pick up free mulch, and that has shifted to compost because through the cooking process, it sterilizes the material. And now it's fire ant-free. They've been working with Little Pointe's Ant Lab and BIS to keep it fire ant-free and they regularly do the methods here and it's been very effective. So, our compost is safe. It's now available to pick up for free. On the east side of the island, you can do ten yards for free if you shovel it yourself or load it yourself. And on the west side, you can get unlimited amounts of compost for free. And also, the new composting facility is slated to be built in two new locations. One is the KO industrial area and the other is the KO transfer station. So, if you have a preference, please email us and we'll make sure that your voice is included in that environmental assessment process. Secondly, a couple of new things that have come up. First, if you're curious about what else we've been up to, I'm having a town hall meeting on March 1st. We have a flyer there. We're going to be talking about all sorts of issues from our roads to our bus system, the farmers markets. And with that, I do have an update to our bus system. It's the new master plan and also an official recommendation that our office put together. It's a thirty-page plan just for Puna that was included in the new master plan. So, if you have feedback on that, it's going to be going through another round of public input. We'd love to hear your feedback. Other things are the TAT, I used to say transient accommodation materials. How many of you have Airbnbs? Alright, well, it must not be that interesting to you. Well, if you are interested in it, we have the bill back there and I'd like your feedback. And then, we're going to be talking about the general excise tax next week and we have a flyer about that. We had our first hearing last week and the county or the mayor's office has proposed a half percent increase to general excise, which is a tax on everything you buy at the store. And so, we'd like to hear your feedback at that meeting. I was publicly opposed to it, but I'd still like to hear your feedback. And with that, there's bathrooms back there to the right. Please help yourself to as much food and water as you like. And we can go ahead and get started. We're going to have a short video to start. And here's the agenda. So, we're looking at about an hour and a half and at the end, we can do an open discussion. And we'd like to hear your stories and your challenges and your specific questions and concerns. So, thank you for being here, everyone.
For an arboreal species, for species that like to live in trees, they're not actually very good at hanging on. This thing's actually very small and a lot of people don't notice that it's an insect that's stung and what they end up with is a thing that it's after being stung, maybe that's a rash.
What is this rash? Intensely itchy painful rash.
They were so itchy, they were so, so itchy. I mean, even a day or two after I got bit, they were still itchy.
Next one will concern this section. That's what we are dealing with, don't declare.
I had to let all the parents know. We have this problem all over in the schools. Prior to like the very recent treatment of this school, they were in my classroom.
People have been stung in their homes, at work, and in parks, publicly in wild places, maybe at hunting, biking, maybe on beach trips. You know, some ants are already infested in parks and the human area.
We know these, but it's around all the power, you know? It falls off the trees too sometimes. Falls onto the peach tree and then it will come up some, it's burning, didn't they, I can't... Yeah, it's getting worse. It's getting worse.
Everywhere, everywhere.
He didn't treat. And he had no luck. So, he had to stand, trying to find a way to get rid of it.
Who looks like he wore the ant skin?
Lot, lot of food. Generations. When the winner's really strong dog come on time. Lot of, lot of people that defend their land, I mean, their cousin family. They don't want to live here anymore. They give up.
So, Tahiti is the most populated island in French Polynesia with the tallest peaks in mountains. So, it has the richest biodiversity in French Polynesia. If some colonies are accidentally moved towards higher elevation areas, it could be, it could be a ecological disaster.
Like Tahiti, Avanti is an evolutionary showcase. Little fire ants have the ability to transport, decimate invasive species. In some infested areas of New Calcutia, little fire ants now dominate, making up more than ninety percent of insects. Its impacts cascading throughout entire ecosystems. Forest birds, the groundless receivers are at risk along its natural hazards. Even the smallest creatures, bugs, beetles, it's millions of them.
Every single animal, we have, we have three cats and two dogs and every single one of them has a clouded, a clouded body.
At first, she was loving to go in the bush. Now she's dead old. She is gone.
My glasses had dropped to the ground and then I picked them up and put them on, I got bit on the eye. And it was so severe, I had to like run to the house and put ice on my eye. I had to lay down. And the thought came that I'm wondering if this is the fire ants.
The bee industry is important wherever you are. All our hives have succumbed to LFA. The larval stage of the bees are very susceptible. If you have LFA and they're close to your hive and they can get up and into that hive, they'll probably take your hive down.
Farming is woven into a basic dream and is key to a sustainable future. Both local and export agriculture and our hopes for food security are at risk because of little fire ant.
I watched them as they were shaking all these ants off of them and basically it was raining ants, raining fire ants on them from the light chain.
We see a very big trouble that came into our coffee plants. Harvesting anything from a tree is going to be very, very, very difficult. And it will greatly impact agriculture, I mean agriculture as we know it will not be here.
So, invasive species and little fire ant in particular are very problematic because they will inhibit agricultural expansion.
When you look at our mandate, it is to protect the native biota, it's to protect the public health. We're so dependent on imported food that we can't let our stores or restaurants go empty. Whether or not there are pests on them, we're forced to get them out. We still get out sampling of interceptions. We're already considered a high-risk pathway for spreading of pests to the continent, to the US. The presence of little fire ant in these rare species is heightened the concern that it will cause California.
California's got very, very restrictive in terms of what we can export from Hawaii to their markets. So, they're, you know, they're really kind of on the verge of closing us down.
They find out that they cannot export their crop or sell it at all, I think they'll be very concerned.
Wearing my hat as the chair of the Board of Agriculture, I see little fire ants being a very significant threat. We need to address this quickly.
How many of you have seen that? Hello, hello, hello. Sorry, I didn't mean to bust everybody's ears out. How many have seen that video before? And how many for the first time seeing it, found it impactful and instructive and would feel compelled to share it with other people so that they could understand really how serious this is? How about we all just make a pledge to share it with three people who you know will actually watch it and that will feel the same way and share it with three people themselves? This is how we're going to spread the word and this is what I'm doing with initiatives that I've begun and gotten a lot of support for. Is without any funding, we need to, as a community, help spread the word. There's a lot we can do among that, so we can be part of the solution. So, I'll tell you just a little bit about how I got started and a bit about both little fire ant Hui and the other initiative, Hawaii Unite Against Invasives. I live on the Kona side and I learned about little fire ants in our neighborhood about four years ago, but I didn't know what they were and so I pictured a mound of red ants like everybody thinks, no problem at all. And then, it didn't take too long before I really understood by maybe watching this video or by other means, that they're really a very serious problem. And then I realized too that in West Hawaii, the awareness is so low and I started hearing stories about your community and how it's impacting all of you here. And it doesn't take much to put the dots together that you're the cautionary tale for not only our county, but the entire state. Since this video was produced four years ago and you saw the little orange dots where they're starting to spread here and they're spreading there. They're now reported in every district of our county. They've had, I think, about eight flare-ups. They're fighting in Maui currently. And the threat you missed kind of at the beginning, the coffee farmer saying, "Oh, that would be terrible if they were in the coffee farms. How would we ever harvest our coffee?" Well, I live in the Kona Coffee Belt and they're in the coffee farm zone. So, it's happened and it's going to continue to happen and it's going to accelerate because these ants aren't on a straight line. This is exponential. And we are really reaching a tipping point. So, until we can get funding, it really is up to us to also help raise awareness. So, the first thing I did was start a coalition. I went down and spoke to my council member in Kona and very quickly just kind of built a logo and got a card and Department of Health came and Department of Ag came and we had Hawaii Ant Lab and Big Island Invasive Species Committee coming. And we were having like monthly task force meetings and pulling in different county departments to discuss with them, like, well, what can we do about this in the building department? What can we do about this in research and development? What can we do, let's, you know? So, we were really just trying to have these roundtable discussions. And that was 2017. This year, 2018, is all about reaching out to the community. I had originally reached out to my House Representative Nicole Lowen and three years ago and said, "This is terrible. We have ants all over this island. What are we going to do about this?" And her response was, "I'm so sorry to hear you have them. It's going to take a joint effort with state, county, and community." And that's sort of the one piece that's been missing is state and county and our wonderful resources here have been talking among themselves, but we need more community involved. We're the ones that are going to tell the personal stories and we're the ones who are going to have to reach out and talk to our lawmakers and all of the people that represent us. If they represent us, they need to hear from us so they know how to represent us. So, that's when this was born, Hawaii Unite Against Invasives. For now, it's a county incubation for our county Hawaii, but we could take this statewide. We could get all the counties together, meet up on Facebook, get information on the website, coordinate the voice so that all together, we can speak to our legislators. Of course, legislation is in session right now and Mayor Kim testified just recently. And this is where we're at here presently on Hawaii County. In a sentence in his testimony, he said, "As a county, we do not have the resources or expertise to fight these devastating invaders on our own. We need as much assistance from the state as you can provide." Okay, so, counties can't do it all by itself and we need more resources. Resources we think of is money, but another really important resource is citizens banding together. That's a very powerful political resource. We can be a resource for change. So, that is what Hawaii Unite Against Invasives is about. We need to organize our communities. We're running town halls all around the county. We've got this one tonight here. Hopefully, you can all combine your voices, get involved in testimony, reach out to your legislators with your stories. Franny will speak some more about that in detail. And, you know, be aware that your legislators may be focused on other important issues as well and they just aren't familiar really. If they're in Oahu and they've probably never been stung by a fire ant, they may not even have friends or relatives who know much about fire ants. So, we need to educate those legislators. We need to put this in front of them. They may be thinking more about the monreal because that's where they live and, you know, they live with that traffic every day. Or they might be, you know, focused on homelessness because they can see that right there on the sidewalk. We need to make these legislators see that the fire ants is a problem and you guys can help do that. Not just you, we're going to Captain Cook, we were in Honolulu, we're going up to Waimea. We're going to go all around this island and get people motivated to help their legislators see what it is that we need to do to save our state, really. These ants are going to run up the whole island chain and rip their devastation. So, real quick here, I will just mention this. This is going to be our playbook. It's called the Hawaii Interagency Biosecurity Plan. And if you have problems besides just fire ants, I'm sure many of you are dealing with two or three other very annoying and destructive invasive species in your community. This plan was put together, the governor commissioned a group to travel all around the world to study best practices and put together a document that would be our guiding document for our state. The problem is that there is one bill that has been killed for two years in a row and it's back up again for a third year that will power this playbook. It will give authority and administratively attach to the state government so that it can be funded. Now, I gave a card out to many of you and you came in the door and there's a website at the bottom of that card. This plan, the link for this plan is on the very front page. Don't be intimidated, even though it looks like a fat document, the part that, you know, the first part's introductions and definitions, you can just kind of cruise through that. And this is broken into three sections. You've got pre-border, that's for goods and, mind you, ninety percent of all our goods that we use every day here, eighty percent of our food is shipped in every day on cargo containers and only three of it is inspected, three percent. That's why we're having all these problems. We need to strengthen our biosecurity. So, pre-border has to do with that and then border has to do with unloading it and inspecting it. We're living in a reality of post-border. We're now here stuck with all of these invasive species on this island that have become established. And this document in a third section, which would be really great for you all to become familiar with, it's not too many pages, just got to find that post-border, lays out all of the tools and assets and action items that need to happen. But none of them are going to happen unless we get some of these important bills passed. And that's why I wrote on the back of that card SB 2399. That's the one, that's the engine that's going to make this playbook come to life. So, let me see what else I can tell you. That's kind of my emphasis for tonight is to make you aware.
Is that video on that website? Say again. Is that video on the website?
It is, thank you for asking that. This website is a comprehensive website that's going to offer all in one place resources. It'll give you all the contact information for our best resources who you'll be hearing from, all of them tonight. And it has a citizen action page, which is listing some of the legislative bills with this one right at the top. And I need more volunteers if people want to provide content. We're going to want to list all of the top invasive species and it would be great to get some content providers on rat lungworm and obezia and rapid ohia duff. You know, we need to come together. Everybody's off in their little corners talking or reaching out independently, but if we could all come together on Facebook, go to this website for all of your information. There's also an email link if you have suggestions, ideas, if you want to volunteer, that would be great. And that's it in closing for me. I just hope that together, we can make a difference. And I think that we can. These town halls all around the island are, that's the goal. And, you know, we'll just keep after this.
What's your name?
Carolyn Dillon. So, in closing, we do have wonderful resources on this island. This town hall tonight is designed to help you independently get some control and comfort, physical comfort on your lot, but to also get the correct information. I know there's a lot of misinformation going around. And don't forget by the end of the evening that we do have this resource table and specimens, if you drop them off to pick up. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, my name is Heather Forrester. I'm the Extension Specialist at the Hawaii Ant Lab and I live down in Puna, so I know the struggle is real. The way that my boss deals with making elected officials more aware of a problem is by taking the little fire ants and shaking them down in the back of their shirts because really that's one way to wake you up about the issue, right? We've been dealing with little fire ants here in Puna for, since 1999 and they're really here to stay. I just want to emphasize that with little fire ants, it's really going to be a personal responsibility for all of us to try and manage them on our own properties. One of the resources, there's plenty of ways that we at the Hawaii Ant Lab can help you, whether it be through our website, through small group meetings and other trainings. We hold a training once a month where we go over the biology and also the Hawaii situation. We get into pesticide safety and specifics on treatment. I just have a short time for you tonight, but I hope that what you'll take out of it today is that the most effective way to treat for little fire ants is to use a bait, which is an attractive food source for the ants. There are a lot of misconceptions out there and so rumors. I just want you guys to take home the information so that you're not wasting your time or your money. The website here also has a video on how to survey. That's really the first step to figure out if you have little fire ants. There's the Maui Invasive Species Committee video and also how to mix up a batch of the gel bait. All of our fact sheets are also available. And I do want to mention my coworker Allison. She's here tonight as well, New Yorkese. Little fire ants, how'd they get here? Why are they such a problem and why should we even care? Well, for those of us that live out in this district, we know why they're such a problem. They're changing our lifestyles, stinging our pets, and impacting agriculture. Little fire ants are listed as one of the world's top one hundred most invasive species. So, that's anything from other insects to marine invasives, plants, you name it. They're listed as one of the top one hundred. As I mentioned, they were first detected in Lower Puna in 1999. I know a lot of times the Department of Agriculture kind of gets a bad rap, like, "Hey, why didn't we do something about this back then?" Well, unfortunately, with little fire ants, we just didn't have the tools in our tool belt to handle the problem at that time. These ants are really a Pacific island problem versus a US mainland problem. So, the baits that we had available were for ground treatment. But with little fire ants, they nest up in the tree as well. Those ants, anything overhead high can live in those trees and survive their entire lives without having to come down and forage on the granules. So, the Hawaii Ant Lab developed a gel bait, which consists of oil, water, xanthan gum, which is an emulsifier, bringing together the... bringing together the oil and water, thickening the mixture so it'll stick in the trees. We also add in some peanut butter as an attractant, and it also helps to mask the active ingredient. We'll talk about a couple options later on in the presentation. I will point out that the right-hand side is a macadamia nutshell. This shows that one colony of little fire ants can fit within something that small, having a half a dozen queens. So these colonies are not large, but they're numerous, and they're all working together. So my kumbaya word of advice for the day is if we could all just work together like the fire ants, we probably would have a chance. This comic shows the guy out, and he just wants to blast away the bugs that he sees. How many times have you seen a cockroach or centipede? You just want that instant gratification for the ant or the cockroach to be dead. Well, with little fire ants, what we, once we understand their colonial structure, we'll understand that this is not an effective means of treatment. We really need to look at these colonies as a superorganism. So their sole purpose is to serve the queen carrying on their genetic material. Each colony that size of a mac nutshell can have half a dozen queens. Once they've mated successfully, they're fertile for their entire lives, which is several years. The males are just around for a short time to reproduce, and then they die. So, sorry about that one, guys. All the workers that we see out and about are females. These are social insects similar to bees. And I think that it's worth pointing out that most of us working in the ant biz are also females, so I just thought that was a good thing. The ants are going to feed through, feed on liquids, and they'll go out, suck the liquids out of their food source, store it in their crop, take it back to the colony and regurgitate it, sharing it with the rest of the colony, but most importantly, the queen. The queens are the ones making the babies, so we wanna get rid of the source of the problem. This trophilaxis, or a fancy word for ant barf, we can use this in our favor. We also are gonna have the eggs or the larva back in the colony, and that's what's pictured in the top right-hand. I like to focus on these aspects of the biology. So when it comes down to doing treatment advice, you don't think that we're just making you jump through these hoops for no reason. Again, your first step is always gonna be survey and identification. At the Hawaii Ant Lab, we're happy to ID your samples. BISC also offers that service for you. It's really quick and easy to do a survey, and you can use it for a variety of different reasons. You could do a detection survey to see if you actually have little fire ants. You can use your surveys to make sure that anything you're bringing onto your property, such as potted plants, landscape material, to make sure that these are not harboring little fire ants. Because even if you already have little fire ants, you sure don't want more of them. You can also use this for monitoring throughout your treatments or after that 12-year treatment has come up to see if you're still detecting any ants. All you need is a chopstick, coffee stirrer stick, any type of wooden stick will do. Put a thin layer of creamy peanut butter. Place these in shady moist areas where the little fire ants are often going to inhabit. We do ask that when you collect the sticks, you freeze them to kill the ants. It makes it easier for us to identify, so they're not running around. The other thing, just a story that I love to share. One time I had a woman come in, and she had a manila envelope full of these ants. Well, they had been sitting in her car for a week, and when I opened the envelope, it was maggots. So I no longer eat peanut butter. But by setting these sticks out, there's a variety of ways that you can help yourself with the little fire ant problem. The last thing that you wanna do is to treat for them when the ant that you have is not the actual fire ant. In Hawaii, we have over 70 species of ants, none of which are native, and of those, 30 of them are capable of stinging us. 10 of those are likely, one of which is the little fire ant. So, one misconception. I'm not getting stung, I don't have little fire ants. That's not really the case in all times. The little fire ants aren't aggressive towards us. They're not really gonna run up our legs. They're typically raining down onto us, getting stuck in our clothing and stinging us that way. Just because you are getting stung doesn't mean you have the little fire ants either. So you can submit those samples to us. When it comes down to treating for the little fire ant, we look at what's called integrated pest management. This is a multi-pronged approach. First of all, looking at prevention. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. What I've found, working throughout the Big Island, this was a really hard sell for the West Side. People would treat it like an STD. I don't have little fire ants. But now they're really catching on that, hey, this is a big problem. Then we look at sanitation and mechanical control. The idea here is to reduce the habitat so that when we come along with our chemical control, it will be more effective. Pesticides are anything that kill a pest, whether it be an herbicide killing plants, a fungicide killing fungus, insecticides killing insects. Leach is actually considered a pesticide because it claims to kill germs. Sometimes people are very sensitive about the use of pesticides. And I never thought that after going to college for a degree in marine science that I'd be teaching people how to use pesticides. But really, I think it's important that we understand what we're using and make sure we're using it correctly so that it's effective and not bringing harm to our families, our pets, each other, and the environment. Always, I'm always a proponent for reading the label. The label is the law. When it comes down to insecticides, we have three main groups. Contact insecticides, those are those that kill on contact. Raid would be an example, Seven as a foliar spray. We also have barrier treatments. These either come in a liquid or a granular form that then gets wetted to become active, and they bind to the surface that you're applying it to. What I end up seeing from folks is that they'll do this broadcast of the, only using a contact insecticide. And they see a great die-off at first, but you're not really getting it back to the queen. So what we recommend at the Hawaii Ant Lab, first and foremost, is gonna be baits. Those attractive food sources that get taken back to the colony, and most importantly, the queen. There are places for contacts and barrier treatments to be used. Barriers can be used around the perimeter of your home to prevent ants as well as other insects from coming in. But you'll notice those contacts and barriers are general insecticides, whereas baits are very target-specific.
So you're saying use the baits as well as those barriers?
Using the baits is your number-one go-to. Sometimes folks have ants coming into their homes, or they have pest insects of another sort. At that time, using a barrier would be a good option for you. It's always important, though, to remember to bait first and then put up your barrier because you want the ants to be moving freely out of the home rather than trapping them in using something like the barrier. So fact sheet number two that we have tonight, that talks, that focuses on ground treatment for your baits and your barriers.
Are these the same treatments that the county are using as well, besides, you know, individual, personal homes? But, you know, I noticed some of the counties are offering the spray, so is that what they're doing mainly?
So the county workers, when they're treating beach parks, they've coordinated with us to, for best management practices. They're focusing on using baits because a lot of times these are near the ocean. But really, when it comes down to doing barrier treatments, that's more effective to keep ants out of somewhere, whereas the baits are those target-specific that's gonna get back to the queen. So using, and for specifics on what they are using, I would recommend talking with the county. So baiting is your best bet. The idea here is to kill an ant slowly. So some options you have Andro, Probate, Siesta, Max Force Complete. What these are is a corn grit granule soaked in oil and then laced with a toxin. They break down pretty quickly within the environment, so they're not residual or persistent. We use something like a seed spreader to broadcast it throughout properties.
So we have three range chickens that run up to a whole backyard and have tents that they can't get out. And so what is it about using a bait because it's a toxin? Does that make sense?
What we say at the Ant Lab is that it's really expensive chicken feed. I do see that it is a concern because the birds are gonna be interested in it. One way around it is to apply your bait while the chickens are roosting, or you might wanna go the gel bait route because then the birds won't be able to peck at it. It will be more of an oily substance on the surface. So that's one option to get around. Part of the reason with little fire ants treatments, it's complicated because there's not just one silver bullet answer for everybody's situation. We always like consulting with you, asking, how big of an area are you treating? Do you have tall trees? Do you have edible crops? Do you have other chickens, for example? So we're more than happy to work with you to get the best fit for your situation. So we talked about how to treat the ants on the ground, but what about those ones up in the trees? As you remember, anything overhead high, as a rule of thumb, the ants are gonna live up there their entire lives. So with that gel bait, the oil, water, xanthan gum, which is the emulsifier, adding in some peanut butter and the active ingredient of your choice, whether it be tango, which is an insect growth regulator for your edible crops, or using ProVont, these are some of your additional options for the gel bait that is applied into the trees. Again, these baits, the ants feed off of it, store it in their crop, take it back to the colony and regurgitate it.
I've got some, I've got tulips, I'm gonna probably 20, 30 feet tall. I'm kind of figuring out that I can't get up there, so I'm in the process of poisoning them and downing them. And I was thinking, how can I get rid of them in the interest? And you talked to me earlier about this drone-kept water, it's like I have forever to deal with this situation because it's a permanent end. So I don't really need to take care of them while they're up there. I can maybe keep on some skills.
That's always an option. Because African tulips are invasive, I have no problem with you cutting that down. But we do hear stories about folks that have fruit trees, that they're just over it. They're like, I wanna chop this thing down. My suggestion for you to alleviate some of the ant issues that you might have while you're chopping the tree down is to use a product like ProVont in the gel bait because this ProVont has a lethal effect. So it's, you're gonna start to see a reduction in the ants within that first treatment. Whereas the tango, the way that it works is like a birth control for the queen. So the queen, the workers don't die from eating this gel bait. What they do is you want an army of ants to take it back to the queen so that it builds up in her system. And over time, her egg production is going to slow and eventually halt. The only thing with tango is that it does take three to four months of treatments to see a decline in your ant population. Sometimes people aren't willing to wait. But again, the label is the law, so if you have any edible crops, tango is really your only option. Did that answer? Just to keep with time, because I wanna make sure that I give all the speakers time to present. I think that we were gonna try to stick with the open discussion till the end. I'm more than happy to stay after as well to talk with you just out of respect for the other presenters. So applying this gel bait would be on the trunk and the main branches. Those are where the ants are going to be foraging. You don't have to, you know, prop dust the entire plant. You also wanna be sure whenever you're applying any pesticides to avoid anything that's flowering. That's when our bees can come in contact with, while they're pollinating. So in summary, these are the three take-home points that I'd like you to bring with you. You wanna broadcast throughout your yard, three-dimensionally. So you wanna treat the ground as well as the trees. You wanna do so on a dry day. I know, I live in Puna as well, we don't get those all the time. But because of this broadcast fashion and the nesting behavior of the little fire ants, with the broadcast, you're giving them a lot of opportunities to find the ant baits that way. So they only need four to six hours of dry weather. Most importantly, re-treat every four to six weeks for a 12-month period. What ends up happening is at first, you'll see great success with these lethal baits because you have an army of ants to take it back to the colony. So you knock them back, and they will inevitably, some will survive and rebound. When people wait till they see ants in the house again, and it starts to be a problem, you're already back to square one. But sticking with it every four to six weeks, you get a gradual star-stuck decline over time. I was asked to do this slide, some rumors and myths about the little fire ants and, you know, what we hear around our neighborhoods. Oh, my neighbors, they just keep bringing these ants in. I treat one time, and then the ants just come back. Well, it takes more than one time. So rather than pointing fingers, we really do all need to work together. And that's part of what BISC does in the neighborhoods, is really coming together as a hooly. I look at it as a pyramid scam. I mean, if you can get your neighbors to buy into it, then it'll be more effective. My neighbors aren't treating, what's the point? Well, these are a species that we can manage on our own properties. And sometimes we think of ants as being able to run across the football field in a day. The little fire ants, we don't know how quickly they spread exactly. I like to say 45 miles an hour in the back of your truck because it's really us spreading them around. But for them to re-establish throughout your yard is gonna be a slower process. So that's not a really good excuse. Do I need to add anything to these granular baits? I hear funny stories about, oh, I took the Andro and I mixed it in the gel bait, yeah? That's what I'm supposed to do, right? But then my sprayer got clogged. It's like, no, you don't put the Andro in, it's attractive on its own. Or even, some people will try to put peanut butter on the outside of Andro. Again, Andro is attractive, and I'm only using that as an example for a granular bait. These are attractive on their own. We don't wanna candy coat them in any ways because it's likely the ants are gonna be eating peanut butter instead of the bait itself. Can I only use those contact or barrier treatments? We really try to get people away from doing the broad-spectrum barrier treatments because what ends up happening with the colony is... is when you're killing only the ants that you see, the queen's not getting anybody to feed her. She ends up kicking out another batch of recruits and ups egg production. So with the baits, that's really your best bet. And then in spot locations, you could potentially use a barrier, such as around the perimeter of your home. If you don't see the ants or if you're not getting stung, they're gone, right? Not necessarily. Some people too can live with these ants for several years before they even realize they're a problem. Their populations get to such a high number, they're raining onto us out of the trees. So don't let the ants fool you. And keep up. Maintenance and follow-through is really your best bet. And this one was a particularly fun one. I have heard this multiple times. If I have a few workers, can they turn into a queen? Well, I took that as these ants are like transformers. But with little fire ants, they're not changing from a worker. As soon as they pupate, they are either a worker or a reproductive. The reproductives would be the queens or the males. So with that, it never fails that I can't shut up for 20 minutes. But I'm happy to stay after for the questions. And again, maintenance and follow-through are really your best bets.
Okay, hi. I'm Brady Brewer. I'm here from Big Island Invasive Species Committee. Shout out to my team, Jade and Peggy who are here today, getting out there in the evening. We have lots of resources there for you, so be sure to stop by. I want to just go over with you what we offer as far as what Heather was just talking about. If you need some help, oops. This is all my technology, so you think I'd be better with it? So BIS offers some programs to help communities with little fire ants. We launched our community education program in May of 2016. And again, the goal is to try and help communities. So we want to get people doing what Heather just described, working together on a plan that's right for your neighborhood, that you can work with your neighbors. And we pester you for like a year to make sure you stay on track and all that kind of stuff. We have done a lot of community information sessions around the island using these approaches, teaching people. So we'll come out. This happens a lot, particularly we're going to the west side a lot now, where we are invited to come out to a community board association meeting, some kind of annual meeting, and present on just the general information. And then we try to encourage any of the homeowners or residences in the area that come to actually form a group, form a hui, and make a plan. And if you can get together and you can do that, we will come out to any neighborhood too. So we've presented in carports, we've presented under tents. I try to use PowerPoint. Sometimes there's not electricity. I've presented in my bare feet maybe eight to 10 times at this point. So we're flexible. Whatever you have, if you want us to come out and do an education session, we work with you to try and get that information out there. Then, as we're helping the neighbors, if they do want to get together and plan a goal, that goal can be anywhere from, we just want to educate or we want to have everybody test for ants. We have little test kits here tonight. You can take them home. It's a nice kind of low-affect way to get your neighbors in that conversation. As Heather was talking about, sometimes it can be hard to talk to somebody about like, do we have fire ants in Puna? It's pretty much a topic of daily conversation. But that's not true everywhere. But if you do want to talk to your neighbors, you can grab some resources and say, hey, I went to this thing at the community center and they were talking about fire ants. Have you tested? Have you looked for fire ants? Are you treating? What are you doing? And it's a way to get the conversation started. Because you're going to be way more effective in treating fire ants if you're not at cross purposes. Just as simple as you're treating on a different schedule than your neighbor, just aligning your schedules to treat at the same time is going to make a bigger difference. So this is something to really get that conversation started. If you do come to, if you do arrange a meeting, we bring like stuff to make it more fun. If you can get a minimum of six participating properties roughly contiguous, we've been working in Puna for quite a long time. We're well aware of absentee owners, vacant lots, all of that stuff that goes on. So this is not something where we say, oh, no, you know, you have two blank lots and so we're not coming out. But if you can get roughly six properties together, then we'll come out and we'll do that first demonstration with you. We'll help you, we'll mix everything up together. We teach you. We ask that you come prepared to work. But we'll come out and we'll teach you and your neighbors what you need to do. And then every five weeks, we expect that you will commit to that year and that you guys will work on a plan. We'll remind you every five weeks, but you know, you're kind of, after that, we leave you with a kit that you need. We leave you the things that you need so that hopefully you can continue for that full year. And then we come back at six months, we come back at 12 months, check on your progress, and we provide support the entire time. Okay, so that's something that we really, we have about 30 communities across the island. They're doing that now, all the way from North Kohala down to Honolulu, across the island, Puna, Hilo, Omauma, Honamoo, everywhere. So there are lots of communities that are actively engaging in this. Sometimes it can feel like you're all alone, but it's really good to know that there's a lot of people out there that are working on this problem. We've also expanded to do special trainings for yard service and gardeners. So if, you know, there's a need for that in your area, we'd be happy to come out and talk to those guys. We're working with the Humane Society. When you go to adopt a pet, when you go in to get your licenses, you should be getting a flyer to alert you. Alert pet owners, they should be testing for fire ants and treating for fire ants. Because we are all aware, those of us in Puna, not everybody in the island, but those of us in Puna are very aware of the impacts of the fire ant stings on our pets' eyes. And we're seeing that, not just in dogs and cats. We're seeing that in pigs. The hunters are reporting that the pigs are coming in with these, plowing the eyes. And we're seeing it in horses. So it's something to really consider where your animals are. This is something you would need to take care of. We also work with schools. This is kind of my favorite thing because I'm a former teacher. So if you're a teacher, you know a teacher, you want this to happen in your children's classroom. I go to classes all over the island and I work with kids, trying to get kids involved in testing for little fire ants at their homes and sharing information about why it's dangerous having kids learn about invasive species. So if you're interested, we offer that as well. I want to kind of take a step back though and talk to you about, we are Big Island Invasive Species Committee. So we do more than just one invasive species. And you might have noticed that the Big Island has a lot of invasive species. And one of the things that, when you're treating invasive species, the earlier you get it, the cheaper it is. And this is on the macro scale of our island or state as well as that micro scale of your backyard. So one of the reasons we say you've got to be testing for fire ants, you don't wait till you get stung, is because the earlier you find the ants, the cheaper it's going to be for you to get rid of them and the quicker it's going to be for you to get rid of them. And it's the same with Hawaii. You can see that if you're on one of the other islands and you find fire ants, you will get a team to come out to your house. And they'll keep coming out to your house every month for years because they want to make sure that they're going to eradicate it. You won't get that on the Big Island because it went quite a long time on the Big Island without the resources and without the state taking action. So unfortunately, what happens with, this keeps happening with so many invasive species, koki frog, semi slug, all of these things. If we wait too long, it gets past the point of no return. And then the cost becomes so high that it's really hard to get any kind of action on that. So we are taking a look. Most of the work that we have done is in the area of plants. For many years, BIS was, we started out as the Myconia Task Force. You may have noticed, Myconia is still around and it's probably getting worse year to year. It was written off at the state level that Myconia was no longer something that could be targeted and eradicated on the Big Island. It was one of those situations of, well, if somebody had done something 40 years ago, then it would have been, you know, we could have controlled it, right? It would have been in hand. But nobody at that point, it's unfortunate with Myconia, but nobody at that point was looking at what are going to be the species 40 years from now. Right? So the Big Island Invasive Species Committee formed initially really to go after those species. What is out there that is spreading that we don't know about? And we did a survey of the island. Took five years to survey every road, every trail, even backyards on the island. And we found 150 new species that had not been described on the Big Island before. 150 new plant species. We evaluate those, go after the worst ones. If we do our jobs, you're never going to hear of them, so that would be good. But unfortunately, you know, a lot of things are already out of the box. So I don't have to talk to you guys too much about albizia here. We just talked a lot about little fire ants. There's things like the fountain grass. When you're going over to Kona, as you're driving over, you look down on the lava, you see all that yellow grass puffs. That is an invasive grass, it's a fire-talling grass. That's why you're hearing of all these wildfires that keep starting and are getting more and more impossible each year. Strawberry guava, spreading all of these plant species. So we have a lot of invasive species problems. Little fire ants is just one. We also have the koki frog and the metal caterpillar, the semi slug that carries the rat loomworm parasite, and the willy-willy gall wasp. All of those species came in in the last 30 years on imported plant materials. Accidental introductions in the last 30 or so years on imported plant materials. And nothing is changing. We're losing our trees, we're losing our nyo, we're losing our ohia. This is a new insect that is now spreading through Orchidland and HPP. It is a wood-boring beetle that kills pough trees and other hardwoods and there's no treatment for it. There's no way to treat this. So these things continue to come in and we are seeing things being sold in nurseries. So for instance, these two plants, mananilla, night-blooming jasmine, three plants, lantana's up there as well. Those three plants, very highly invasive and we're still seeing them sold in nurseries. There's no law that says they can't be. So we have a program where we go into nurseries and we ask, pretty please, don't sell that plant. And they can say no. And there's nothing that we can do about it. So these things are continuing to be spread. This is a koa forest in Ka'oon. All of that brush underneath is night-blooming jasmine. There's no new koa that are going to come up there and no other understory plants because the entire area has been taken over by night-blooming jasmine. And yet, you can walk into most nurseries, about half of the nurseries on the Big Island are selling one or more invasive species. So we have a lack of biosecurity. In 2015, the USDA published a report that said, that basically looked at, it was pathways. How are these invasives getting into Hawaii? These really damaging invasives. And they focused on pests and disease. And they said that live plant materials continues to be by far the most important pathway for things coming in. So we're still importing these live plants just so people can plant them in the garden. But this is how we're getting our pests and diseases. We do have a proposal that was put out by the state last year for biosecurity, to improve biosecurity. This is not the whole proposal, it's like 200 pages, it's online. But we have the link on here. This is the executive summary, which you can get on our table. Unfortunately, although this was introduced last year, none of the bills to get it launched, it's 10 years worth of different actions with legislature, state. None of the bills passed. So they introduced four, they all died last year. There's a bunch more that came through again this year and there's some stalling going on. So if you're interested in improving biosecurity, one, you can go online. And I think that Carolyn has the link to the biosecurity on that Hawaii night site that she had up there earlier. And there's two bills that are pretty important. One is to launch the Hawaii Invasive Species Authority, which would actually start to like look at these issues and take care of these issues of biosecurity. And another one is to establish an emergency response fund. So right now, when a new pest comes in, the way that our program works, we're part of the university, we have to apply for a grant in order to get any action. And sometimes a grant cycle can take a year. If you can find somebody that's willing to grant it, then there's another few months while they set up the account before you can start to hire people. So you could have a brand-new species and it could take you two years before you can really start to take action on it. We are trying to get an emergency response fund that the state, like you would have for a natural disaster, that we hold an account, something new comes in and we have the money to go after it. That's SB 2116. That and SB 2399, which establishes the Hawaii Invasive Species Authority, they are stalled. They passed their first committee. So they get introduced in one committee, the committee says yay. But now they have to go to what's called the money committee. So that's the Ways and Means Committee in the Senate. The way that bills die a lot of times in Hawaii is that the next committee decides just never to hold hearing. So you don't even get to give testimony. You don't even get to the point where you can offer testimony to support that bill. And that's kind of where these are right now. So the one person who can schedule those for a hearing, just give us a hearing so we can get people to give testimony, is Senator Del Cruz. And what we really need is people to email or call him and say, will you please just schedule these? However you feel about the bills, it's important for people to have the chance to at least provide testimony. Because these things are going to keep coming in. They're coming in every year and we are not taking the steps we need to prevent the next fire ant. There's worse fire ants out there and they're headed this way. Japan just got two, in the last few months, two new fire ant detections. So that's our funders. But I want to go to this slide because I do, that is kind of like intense. And I want to end it on a happy note. We, like I said, we've been working with 30 communities. And we asked them, those who had completed their year, we said, what would you tell people who are starting out and trying to take care of fire ants? What would you let them know? And these are quotes from them. So like, don't ignore the problem, get educated, be proactive. Don't expect to see results in the short term. Don't get frustrated, it can't be done quickly. Persevere, it is so worth it. Stay consistent. I skipped treatments and they came back 50%. So don't skip your four to six weeks, right? Awareness and diligence are key. Denial is not a way to manage problems. Stick with the schedule, attend community meetings and get-togethers. So these are people that are very happy because they've managed to clear fire ants completely off their property for communities in Hawaiian Paradise Park, which was ground zero for where the fire ants started in 1990. So it's absolutely possible that you can get this under control. But at the same time, while you're getting that under control, you don't want the next thing coming in that you have to deal with. So if you could think about that on that state level, that would be awesome. And that's it. Appreciate it. And if you have any questions, I guess I'm going to move on to, did Carolyn slip out? Oh, there. Did you want to follow up with anything?
Just that if, you want to share the website, you know, there's more cards in the back to share with your friends. And also, I think the best would be collecting email signatures at your table.
Oh, right, that's right. So if you want more information on the legislation, hopefully this is going to get scheduled. But we're going to be sending out emails on this legislation. It's kind of, I don't know if anybody's gone through this process before, the rat loomworm last year was a big one. You really have to stick with it. It's not like you send your testimony in once and that's it. These bills go through a bunch of different committees and then they go through crossover. So if they're in the House, they have to cross over to the Senate. If they're in the Senate, they have to cross over to the House. And then they go through a bunch more committees on the other side until they get to the end. So sometimes you have to submit your testimony five times, six times. So it's kind of a pain in the butt. You can submit the same stuff over and over again, but it doesn't carry through. But we will send out, if you're interested in that and you want to sign up, we will send you notifications. We'll try not to send you for every committee, but just when we know it's hitting a committee that it's iffy. So if you're interested in that, please come to our table and sign up on our email sheet and we'll get that information to you because we do want to make it as easy as possible for you. We'll give you the link right in the email so it'll take you right to the website where you give the testimony and all that. Any questions about that, biosecurity? Yeah?
You know a good point to put out when you have a big bite?
We don't give out medical advice, but Jade has a really interesting list of all of the random things that people have told us they use. So she could share that with you. One of them is WD-40. I don't really know how well that works. We've heard lots of things. We've heard like apple cider vinegar, we've heard, you know, all kinds of stuff. I give my husband Benadryl, because he has a really bad reaction to it, but...
The most, the most important thing though is to keep it clean. Like I did in the video, the infection that my husband after, so yeah.
You're scratching.
Let me ask you one more. A Mexican ant invaded Hawaii yet?
Not that I know of. The Mexican ant? Which Mexican?
I know there were, 20 years ago, they were coming.
Is this the red imported fire ant?
They're black, and they're bigger.
I don't know. Allison, do you know?
I guess not.
A Mexican black ant?
In Texas, there is like a large mass of black ants.
Yeah, and they were coming over to Hawaii 20 years ago. So, I mean, very destructive.
Is it the fully black with the white?
It's all black.
I'm not sure. I'll have to, I'll look around and see.
We have over 50 species of ants, and they're all introduced. No native ants have been borned, so. And they keep coming. That's, that's part of the reason that I'm here to stress biosecurity, because they, they just keep coming. And it's, it's getting harder and harder for us to keep up with that. We're not keeping up with it, to be honest.
I used to work in permanent, that's why.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, so you, yeah. You know all the bad guys.
Twenty years. So ants are hard to get rid of, but once you get them, you got to find the nest.
And, and that's what makes it really hard with little fire ants, because you find one nest, it's like dozens, dozens of nests.
The big ones.
Yeah.
You know, termites and...
Yeah, it's very different. Okay, I think, I'll go to you, but you had a question, yeah? You? Nope, okay, go ahead.
So my hunter friends say that in the, in the, in the bushes, there's huge colonies of fire ants. Is that true?
Yeah, so the way that they make their colony is not like, you know, like a red imported fire ant or some other ground nesting ant where there's a big mound. But what they'll do is they'll have little tiny nests. I mean, you just peel back the moss of a tree, and there it is. Heather showed a picture of half a mac nut shell. It's a full nest. But what they'll do is they'll just make dozens, if not hundreds of them, so that they're just everywhere. So you can never, it's like a great adaptation if you're an ant. You can never fully stamp them out by just killing a few nests, because they have plenty more, and the queens will just lay more queens to create more nests. So they, it's, you can almost think of it as like a big web with lots of little hubs. That's what a fire ant colony looks like. It makes it really different from a little fire ant colony, makes it different from some other ants.
So it'd be impossible to eradicate them from the island because they're all over the place.
Yeah, we, we, there, it's unlikely that they would be eradicated from the island. And only in Puna are they really in the wild areas, because they are ants that move around with people. So like, it's one of the reasons we're going around the island and trying to get more people to understand, because they don't, you don't have to let them be there for 30 years, and then they start to spread into those wild areas, right? They start out around people's houses. If people take care of them, then they will get there. But in Puna, you see that, that they've gone into the wild areas because they've been here long enough, and, and we want to try and get ahold of that and maybe like contain where they are. Yeah.
This, it shows a hose, but I can't use a hose. A gallon sprayer, would that work, or you go bottles?
Yeah, the hose is just to represent water. It's just how much water you want in there.
Peanut butter and oil, is that worth a sprayer?
Yeah, so we, we use these two buckets just to prevent lumps. So that's why we do it that way. So you just have your water and your tango in one bucket, and then your peanut butter and your zebbit over there. We use that.
Oh, yeah, I see.
Yep.
As long as you take, you take, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's a little filter on the end.
Oh, yeah.
So take that little plastic part off, and you can clean, clean it out when you're done, because then, does that make them?
Yeah. Those spray pretty far, too.
I think, I think the gels work the best for the ants. They eat that stuff, and you, you got to be careful where you put it, too. Don't put it in the kitchen.
No, no, probably, we don't recommend bait traps. I know my mom doesn't recommend bait traps, because you want to get it everywhere, but in your house, probably bait trap is better. Don't spray your walls with peanut butter and oil. Yeah?
When ants fall on you, are, are they falling on you on purpose or do they just fall for you to move around?
Yeah, they don't hang on very well. They're not very sticky.
Well, they're not trying to...
And they're not trying to attack you, and when they fall on you, what will happen is they're, they're just kind of like, you know, moving around, but then you'll pinch, right? That's why we always feel it, for women, we always do this when we talk about fire ants, because this is where we feel it, right? Because the, your bra or your shirt will pinch, and then that one ant that gets pinched puts out a pheromone to tell all the other ants like, sting now! So that's why it's like you go from like nothing to like, oh my god, everything just lit up, because they all sting at once. So, yeah. It's good times.
That's good as long as you want.
No, and that's one of the reasons, you know, there's a lot of, like I said, there's a lot of worse ants out there. And so you probably, with the hurricanes that were happening in Texas and all that, and might have seen the, on the news, they had those big rafts of fire ants, and they were telling people who were escaping the flooding, like, be careful of these things that are floating, because those ants actually will attack. So they, they're more aggressive than the ones here. So it's one of the reasons we're like, we've got to stop all this stuff coming in, because there's worse ants that could come, you know? And, and you know, as bad as little fire ant is, can you imagine something worse?
I'm from Florida, and before you ask, no, I did not bring you ants. I have been lit up by red imported fire ants, and I don't even notice little fire ants in Miami, because those suck apart.
Yeah. People ask me all the time, they're like, well, what are they doing about it in Florida? I'm like, uh, letting bad ants get from?
Yeah. Why are they absolutely...
Ants, but...
Yeah.
We're dealing with a much worse problem.
They are bad, yeah.
Do you have a question?
Do you use the Andro and Tango at the same time, or also?
You can, it kind of, it's, it's, it really depends on your landscape. So we usually recommend the gel bait when you have a lot of vegetation or like trees to get up in there. And then also the tango would be used on your food trips. So, and if you have a lot of lawn or a lot of cinder or something, then you might want to use granules from the Andro. So it kind of depends on your landscape.
Do you have both?
You, you could just spray the, the Tango, but, but you're really going to want to have a gel bait if you have a lot of vegetation. So you definitely want to have that. Yeah. You really want to try and cover all of it. Yeah. And, and you might not want to spray the Tango if you have, you know, cement, that you don't want the oil to stain or something, so you may want to go with something like the granules. But you can use them at the same time.
So you're applying the gel bait, say, when it's not raining?
Yes.
And how long can it be effective before it rains?
The ants will get what they need in about four to six hours. So we, you know, and the gel bait is a little bit more resistant because it's got the oil, it's oil-based. So the gel bait's a little bit more resistant to the rain, so if you have a late rain, we had a case in Wawa where it stormed right after, like within an hour of when we had done the application. And they called us a couple hours later, and they said they had gone out after the storm passed, and the ants were feeding on the gel bait. So it's something where, you know, that, the gel bait is much, you know, if, if that happens with the granules, they're kind of done for. But with the gel bait, you have some rain resistance. So if it does rain, don't panic.
And the gel bait, you can apply that to lawn as well, if you're breeding chickens?
Yeah. Yeah, as a matter of fact, we've done that in Hawaii Paradise Park Community Center, because they have a big lawn, and so we had sprayed it on their lawn, and the chickens would come and eat it. And so now, when we arrived, the chickens run to our vehicle because they think that we're bringing them peanut butter, but it was fine.
But the gel bait, you can still apply to lawn, not add up all?
Yep, we, we did, yep.
And the chickens ate, you put it with the...
With Tango, yeah. Yeah, especially when we're cleaning out the buckets, they'll come all around while we're cleaning and eat everything up.
Does it hurt?
No. It doesn't have any impact in mammal and bird bodies, so, yeah.
Is there a guy at the food market selling new plastic bait traps that you stick in the trees? You put powder bait in, and then it from the tree, is that, near that?
So we don't usually recommend the, the bait traps for your yard, because the ants don't smell. It's not like they're like, what's that? And like, go get it. They are just, the reason they're massively out everywhere is because they're, that's how they forage, and when they find something they like, they'll put the chemical trail back to the other ants, let them know. So the more you can get bait kind of everywhere, the more chance they have to encounter it. If you're only putting it in the bait traps, and, and we've seen people who have made their own bait traps and get really excited about it, but they actually don't do as well as if you just put it everywhere. So it's something, I think, you know, if you are concerned, like people do get concerned, even though I feel very comfortable using it around cats, dogs, chickens, if people are concerned, I think it's good for them or in your house, because you just don't want to throw Andro or spray peanut butter in your house. But in general, we don't recommend it. Just try and get the bait everywhere. And I mean, you know, if you have a rock wall, it's like you have your Tango, you spray one line, right? So it's enough. You don't have to like actually coat the wall, but you just want to have, have that everywhere that it could be, yeah.
And Provant, be applied to a food tree during non-frying season?
No. No. Yeah. I mean, I don't want to give the impression that indoxicarb, which is the active ingredient, I don't want to give the impression that it's dangerous. Again, it's not. In fact, indoxicarb is used as a spray on food crops on the mainland, but that product has not been labeled for food crops in Hawaii in that formula. So that's, that's the legal ease.
The Tango, what do you think is good for like flowering trees where there's honeybees?
We just say avoid the flowers. The, the bees are not going to be attracted to peanut butter and oil. So they have to ingest that bait in order for it to have an impact, and the bees are not going to land on them, because they're looking for sweet, right? They're going to land on flowers. So we usually just say, just avoid the flowers. If you're hitting, because even with ants, you, you really want to get on the branches or the trunk where they're going to be traveling. So as long as you can kind of just be careful with your application, the bee shouldn't even come into contact with it. Yeah. So, and it's also one of the reasons, Heather mentioned earlier, people get into using like Tall Star or Bifin or any of these barrier treatments, and they, they're like, it's great, you just spray the whole yard, you know, or you put the granules all over the whole yard. Those are not baits, and they're not specific for ants. So what happens when you use those is you do start to see all the other stuff disappear. So we don't recommend that as a approach, but you will hear people like, oh, I spray by this. You know, we see this a lot in West Hawaii where the landscapers, you know, they have snowbirds coming, and they want the Disney version of Trappist where there's no bugs, so you never encounter a bug. And so they're putting this Bifin all over the, and it just killed everything except in the yard. And we're like, you know, we, we use pesticides a lot in our work, so we have, we have this philosophy of like, don't leave them out in the most humid way possible. So I mean, I feel very comfortable with, with the Tango. I don't feel so comfortable with throwing Bifin everywhere. It should be applied very judiciously to create a border, and it's very effective that way, yeah.
So I'm going to six acre plot. So we're blanked on three sides, by east land or jungle or across the street. And I'm not going to stop the fire ants in those places. So barrier treatment, I think, makes sense around the property by a 20, 20 foot buffer, you know, considering the wind, you know, can, they can fall out of the trees or something. So every six weeks or so, I'm doing a buffer, you know, 20 feet wide on three sides of the property, just to keep them from coming.
Yeah. And that, that you're going to be locked into. That's going to be the reality of the Big Island.
Right.
Forever.
But that's important for some other people, it may be also dealing with areas that they're not able to deal with fire ants.
Yeah. And it's actually, so I talked about those communities that we've been working with, and we have a bunch of people that have completed their year, and they're all different landscapes. And, and what happens is we go back at the end of the year, and we're like, okay, you should be fire ant free. And people are like, I'm fire ant free, except there, right? One border, and like, they all have like one clump of bananas where there's a bunch of mulch. So they know where the ants are, and at that point, it's like, okay, now it's time for a border. You need to put a border in, because they're coming in from some open area, some absentee owner lot, something like that. So that's the way to go.
Okay. So I, I was asking some of the... So I know the Tango is the preferred treatment, everybody's kind of locked into that idea to mindset. But we had a guy...
There are other equally good products.
Well, we got a guy down the street that, he uses ProVant for square one. And his logic is, you knock them back at the front, you know, at the first treatment. And then they come back, and then it's a maintenance thing, right?
So is he not doing it every four to six weeks? He's like...
No, he's doing like, he's turning it into a business.
Ah, okay.
So I got a neighbor, I'm going to, you know, survey the ants, see where they are, and they introduce him to, to do this property. But, and it's jungle again, but it's not fruit trees, so he can use the ProVant. So, you know, the eradication really comes up once in a while, but not a lot, you know, we're doing maintenance.
Right. On this island, we're do, well, yeah, you're doing...
But you just said you can get them off the property, so that's eradication.
Localized, yeah.
Localized.
Not island-wide.
And you can't do that with ProVant, you have to do with Tango?
No, you can do that with any products that Heather talked about.
ProVant, you can, you can eradicate with ProVant?
Could I just speak to that, yeah? So based off of the research that we're doing at the Hawaii Ant Lab, what we use for eradication efforts, which is what I was talking to you about earlier, was we used Tango to begin with to weaken the colony, and we find that it has better long-term results. Yes, there are other options that you can do to treat for fire ants, but what we use in eradication efforts are six months of Tango to weaken the colony, coming back with Provant to kick them while they're down. You can do whatever you want. With the point that I was making too, with the Provant, since you're dealing with six acres, that's a large boundary to maintain in a jungle. In order for a barrier treatment to really be effective, you want an open swath of land. If you have trees overhanging onto your property, those are going to be like highways. So to me, with the bait, you get a further reach, even if you're applying it on your property, then the ants from the neighboring properties are still going to come and feed off of it. You're applying it in a legal fashion. So there's, what I do want to bring up and say is that there are a lot of backyard guys that are trying to make a business out of it, but in reality, you know, a lot of times we want to trust our neighbors, but there are licensed pest control operators out there that have been trained to do effective treatments, some of which like Willkill, Vetron and other companies have come to work with us. We don't recommend any one in particular, but there's more than one way to, to handle these issues. So I always say, do whatever works for you. If you want to listen to your neighbor, that's fine. And I hope, I wish you'd accept it.
One thing we don't recommend though, we hear this a lot, is people who are like, oh, I'm treating, the, the guy comes back and he treats every three to four months. That's the business model that's going to be like, you're paying him forever. Because if you wait three to four months, right, that's when they come back.
Right.
So that's, that's one of the ones you keep hearing.
It's a maintenance program either way, I'm going, uh, six, every four to six weeks. And by the way, I had direct experience with Willkill, and a guy came to your meeting last month.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, and he's a personal friend of Willkill. He doesn't show up, you know, there's a problem.
Was it Willkill or...?
It was Willkill. Who's that? Which guy from Willkill? I don't know. Oh, yeah? Oh, you, you, you're from Willkill? Yeah, I'm the owner. Oh. I'm curious, I'm curious, because that's the first time I would have ever got that. Pretty...
Wasn't anybody from Willkill?
It was a friend, a friend. Are you sure it was Willkill or was it a friend? Or is it different? It was a friend, a friend. Okay.
Okay.
The friends of the friends gets kind of sketchy sometimes.
If it was, if it was set up directly with us, I can guarantee we would be there. Guaranteed. We do hundreds of houses and properties around here. Okay, good.
I, I've heard good things.
You know, you're, you're talking legislation. We're going to have a governor's election in the next three or four months, yeah?
Yes.
And, yeah, well, no, probably, they don't have the primaries, you know? And the primaries in August, I think, or something like that?
Yeah.
And if you could get either one of the three candidates interested, you know, Russell Pope, who was head of the agriculture department, right, agriculture? So it's very likely he'll be, he'll be in Pauline Hade's campaign.
Okay.
Okay? Because he worked really hard for the, for Senate, so, so Russell was on the, in the video, so, so he knows all about it, yeah? So it would...
No, that's a, that's a great idea. I'd love to get them all on the record about where they stand on biosecurity and invasive species, yeah? Yeah, thank you.
Russell was to name the telephone book, so.
Yeah?
You have a few.
Are there any more questions or comments? All right, well, I really appreciate you all sticking through this, and thank you, Franny and Heather. It was a very thorough presentation. I definitely learned a lot, and I hope you did too. Just to reiterate, you can go to bis, B-I-S, excuse me, B-I-I-S-C@Hawaii.edu, or littlefire@hawaii.com to get those specific recipes, and there's videos on how to do that. With that, help yourself to snacks, you can take them home if you like. Again, you can sign up for our newsletter here, and thank you so much for being part of such an important issue. Uh-huh.